All right, Penny.
Your question.
All right, thank you. All right. Call the meeting to order any items from the public. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, if there's no modifications or changes, I move we approve the agenda for Thursday, January the 27th, 2022.
Have a motion on floor in a second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Any questions on the purchase order?
Mr. President, if I could just point out one item, the very last entry on the last page, you'll see that we're making our annual $300,000 payment to the 911 account. And that's to cover those expenses that are not classified as true 911 expenses. This is our annual, our annual payment. It more than covers our non-emergency expenses down there.
Yeah, it helps us offset our payments or does offset our payments.
It does.
So we are, they are up to date then?
They are.
Okay, but I know they, we was lagging behind on billing them for a while.
We just, we just built, we just built them this week.
Okay, all right. Any other questions or concerns on the purchase order? Mr. Davis, it appears we have no internal budget revisions.
We have none.
We have quite a few changes in status. We have a new hire recommendation received from Tim Zaya, Director of Community Corrections, for the following: Bruce Orr as a part-time driver with an hourly rate of $15.50 effective February 1st, 2022; Emma Lardner as a peer recovery coach with an annual salary of $37,509 effective February 8th, 2022; we have Catherine Blunt as a recovery technician with an annual salary of $37,509 effective January 31st, 2022; Kristen Cook as a J O T I P P peer recovery coach with an annual salary of $37,509 effective February 7th, 2022; change in status received from Jen Swisher, 911 Director for Noah Kenny. He is going from part-time to full-time with the salary increase from $22 per hour to $41,785 annually effective January 31st, 2022; change in status from Mike Lang, Chief Court Marshal for Calvin Blake. He is going from, from retired full-time to part-time as needed with a salary decrease of $41,580 to a $19.83 per hour effective March 1st, 2022. Any change, any questions on change in status? All right, moving on. I'm just about wish Calvin the best on his retirement. He's been a very valuable employee.
Actually, we're bringing him in.
Okay.
In February, so he'll have the opportunity to.
All right. All right, moving on to the minutes. We have January 20th, 2022, council meeting minutes. Councilperson Whitaker was not present. Any changes or corrections? Because Tracy was in charge of those minutes, I'm sure. Those were yours, okay. I'm sorry.
Will you make a motion?
No, yes, I will.
No, yeah, which one is it?
I'll take a yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for January 20th, 2022.
May I have a motion on floor in a second? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
And I will abstain. I was in the building but not present for the meeting.
You were here but not here.
That's right, my lights were on but nobody was.
Gee, I wonder if that's ever happened.
First time last Thursday, Dan.
Yeah, so, all right, we're, for the county council, calendars. Let me figure this out here. All right, we'll be here today, this afternoon at 2:00 PM for board overview and equalization and also working on our budget presentations. On Tuesday, February 1st, 2:00 PM, board of review and equalization. Thursday, the 3rd, 9:30 AM will be the council meeting and 2:00 PM board of review and equalization. And just to remind everybody, Jim and I will be out next week and then Dan and I will be out on the 8th, no, we'll be here on the 8th.
We won't be here.
Won't be here on the 10th, so we'll trip to Charleston, try to bring back some, some paper with ink on.
Okay.
All right. Boards and commissions, I'm sorry. Tonight, we have, I gotta get my stuff. Library at 5:00 PM on February the 2nd, Wednesday, at 1:30 PM, MPO meeting. Thursday, 5:00 PM on the 3rd, amputations authority meeting. Any changes or corrections on boards and commissions? We have bond reduction for Middle Creek, Vista's Section 1, Phase 1, final. And this would be BCP file number 2110-396 tied to And this would be B C P file number twenty-one-ten-dash-three-nine-six, tied to B C P two-zero-one-two-dash-three-eight-zero. L O C. number zero-five-dash-two-two-one. Any, any questions for Doug while he's here? All right, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Same move, Mr. President?
Have a motion on the floor in a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries, thank you, Doug. All right. Board and meeting reports, Mr. Barnhart.
Thank you, Mr. President. Monday, I had a, we had a health meeting, Zoom meeting, of course. I didn't take notes, but I do remember that Angie Gray submitted her resignation as of February the seventh, and of course, COVID seems to be running the show there still. And, and we're trying to work our way through that, and ramifications of Angie leaving, I'm not sure about, because I only have one nurse now, so, something is going to have to be worked out. Also had a board and board meeting, but didn't make it for the health department meeting, ran over and passed by. So, there it is.
Thank you. Did have a couple, a message, or a conversation with a couple of the, one of the senators and, and one of the House representatives last week about some other issues, but well, I had him on the phone, I touched on those issues as well, about, you know, the jurisdictional funding, the minimums for staffing, those type of things that are causing big problems for our health department.
Yeah, there's been several ideas, you know, one is remove the health department from the division of personnel. Of course, have to, have to substitute division personnel for something, so, you know, a lot of things are in the works about that, but I don't know, time is not what we have. So, you know, just have to sit down and talk about it.
Well, it's, I mean, who's gonna go to work? I mean, who's gonna take that job?
Yeah, I'm doing it.
I mean, when there's nurses needed everywhere right now, and they're paying twice what they're paying there.
Yeah. W B U. has several hundred staff people, you know, COVID now.
Right.
Yeah, so.
They're paying nurses large money right now for travel.
Yep.
You know, so.
Yep.
I don't know what somebody would even.
Well, it's in the provision, and, you know, they think they have to call the state and have the state send some nurses down to cover it.
A lot of states are actually bringing in the guard in reserve to, to help with health departments and hospitals.
Well, and, you know, the, the situation with the guard with the health department, you know, the guard has basically left the health department and gone to the hospitals, so, you know, they can't allow the guard right now, they're going.
Mr. President, may I, as it relates to COVID, we got a call late Friday afternoon that both W B U. and Valley Health had an abundance of COVID self-test that they wanted to give us, so we picked up ten cases of COVID self-test on Friday. There are sixty, yeah, forty, there are forty-five boxes per case with two tests per box, so each case holds ninety tests. So not only did we get a, get a large donation on Friday, but then we also got a similar donation earlier this week. So we actually have three departments of the self-test in, in council chambers, Judicial Center has it, Sheriff's Department has it, Day Report Center all have it, nine-one-one, so we have, now we suddenly have an abundance of, of self-tests, and they've encouraged us to make them available to our employees.
All right, taking, Mr. Delia.
Had a, let me double check here, had a light going on. Had a airport meeting on Monday. Had a very good year review.
It was a good review.
It was.
Very impressive.
Really, have you seen it yet?
I got it in my truck to read.
Yeah.
Our trouble, our twelve-year review, though, Nick, coughed just a little bit.
Yeah, had, had some, you know, had some good news that there's continuing plans to keep expanding our flight service, which is, which is good. The, it, it seems like, it seems like that board is, has a very good grasp on, on the management and the continued growth out there, and really, really happy to have, have been a part in that whole process for these several years to see where it's at today, because it's, it's really, it's really a, a strong, a strong entity in our community that's going to just continue to do better, so it was really, really, really good to see, and the presentation did really well. Had a, that was on Monday, on, on Wednesday, I had a C V D. meeting. They, they postponed the election of officers due to the fact that several of the members are either up for reappointment or will be within a very short period of time, and they wanted to wait a little bit until they had what they called a more stable board to be able to elect officers from. They have a lot of things going on, there's, they received a request from the, from the Roundhouse to, to start doing tours again, so they started that conversation of how that's going to work and, and be able to do that with, with the construction going on at the Roundhouse, and how that'll be part of it, so I think the, the board of the Roundhouse needs to get with them and try to come up with some answers, but I think it won't be long, and the C V D. will be offering tours again and marketing that as well. Senior Services, had a, had a good meeting, Amy had a conversation with the board about, about what we had talked about when she was in here discussing Meals on Wheels and, and the senior services and the how to do meals, and I think it was a consensus of the board that the, the two of them, although they kind of do the same purpose, the way they do it, the structures of how they do it, is just too different to be able to work the two together. Not only that, but the requirements from the state for the senior services and what they have to do as opposed to how Meals on Wheels, both of them are great services, but they're just structured totally different, and I think it, it was a consensus that that not be changed. There's also discussion about advertising. Senior Services does advertising, and the conversation about them doing advertising for Meals on Wheels at the same time was brought up, and, and it kind of evolved that what they're talking about possibly doing is creating a, a small committee that makes recommendations and not only highlight Meals on Wheels, but every time they send out the newsletter that that goes out once a month, that they highlight somebody that has something to do with, something to do with senior services, some way that it can, you know, that can highlight somebody that has the benefit for that. We had a conversation, I started a conversation about how big the two-hundred-fiftieth celebration is, and what the senior services were doing to be involved in that, and they said, well, we're gonna figure it out, that they hadn't thought about that, but they said absolutely they should figure something out and, and plan on something, whether it's at their facility or maybe going somewhere, blessing seniors, maybe to the, out to the airport event, or, or, you know, somehow figuring out how they can do something to make sure that the seniors are involved in that two-hundred-fiftieth celebration. And that was, that was about it, a couple hours worth of work, I actually did this with.
Mr. President, may I, we took a delivery of all four of our replacement units for the senior services yesterday.
And three of them are going.
Three of them are gonna be installed. So the second week in February, we have Chad Roberts coming in with the crane to remove the, the old ones and help us set the new ones, and we'll begin the process of hooking the, the new units up, so we do have all four units now.
And then, and I think Amy said that they're gonna try to get three of them done in one day, so they're gonna do a one-day installation, the ones that are not operating, and then there's one that is kind of operating.
Yeah, the oldest unit is the one, it's the one that's still operating, but it's, it's in derity of replacement, but we, you're right, we have three that aren't operational at all, and those are the ones that will, I think it's the eight of them.
So it does mean that just because you're getting older, you're not, you're still capable of working, right?
Well, once you get, once you hit sixty-five, it's all downhill.
Did you hear that, Jim?
What?
Point taken over here.
What'd you say?
And then I guess the thought process is if the other one fails, then we'll schedule it, or, or schedule it in the spring.
We're gonna go and do all four of them, but we, we wanna just address those first three, yeah, while we have the crane there, we're gonna do them all, but we wanna get those, those three done, and we're gonna try to do three of all in one day. It's all, as you know, in February, it'll all be weather permitting.
All right, Mr. Whitaker.
Yes, sir, I was able to attend my Zoom meeting with our Eastern Panhandle Transit Authority, and we, or they, I guess I should say reluctantly, accepted a resignation from Amanda, so she, she's seeking, I guess, other employment somewhere else, is that the, so it's reluctant, but yet she was, she was quite the asset that Panhandle Transit Authority had, so, they're gonna tell you all the good things that's coming up with the.
We're gonna defer to, to Elaine and Nick, and not have to listen to you then.
And that'd be, that would probably be the best thing to happen today, so, and then I wasn't, I wasn't able to attend the airport authority meeting, but down, down, so.
Okay, all right, Councilperson Gukunayer.
Yes, sir, had Landmarks Committee meeting on Monday. We now have a new chairman, Susan Crowe has accepted the chairmanship of that committee, and we still have one vacancy to fill, which, I do have several folks who are interested, they'll be getting their applications in. I think actually you may have sent an application out this week, Tracy, but also during the meeting, the farmland protection representatives, Dr. Shabon and, that was terrible, I can see. It happens. Anyway, I'll think over here just a minute.
Right.
And they would like to turn the easement to Boydville, which is under homeland, or under farmland protection, they would like to turn that easement over to Landmarks. And I was glad that Anthony was in the room, I'd asked Anthony and Matthew to attend that meeting, asked Matthew to, just to bring the board up to date of the two-hundred-fiftieth birthday celebration, so they were aware that, you know, like the Morgan Cabin was, you know, hopefully gonna be able to pay a load and, and other, other places as well, but, and then Anthony to help just make sure that we move forward correctly, and then with the easement request, we did not act on it until Anthony looks at all the documents and makes sure that it's something that we should do. It does kind of seem to fit us better than what it does farmland protection, so, that's, that's where we're at right now, I'm sure by next meeting we'll probably make a decision one way or the other on that, but.
How does that work? I mean, and, and I've been, I've been hearing all along that, you know, once it's in farmland protection, it's there forever and there's nothing you can do about it, so how do, how do we always, all of a sudden come up with a way to hand it off to another entity?
So it's not the farmland protection easement, which they also have, it's the historic preservation easement.
Okay.
And then they annually go in and inspect the field for it.
Right.
If the owners are gonna make any changes, they have to come to the property to notify them.
Right.
It's not like the farmland.
And that was Tom Lee's.
I knew it'd come back to you, that's why, when I, something comes to me, I gotta talk about it, or I'll forget it. I have note boards to report on for this past week, I guess we can talk a little bit, Alan, about the Dunn Building renovations, and I think they're being finalized and, and being touched up just for the, the last couple, couple minutes, adjustments. The only thing that really came up on the Dunn Building was the fire in Ambulance, that's been worked out, and the one room to the, on the northwest corner, or about a tower here, it's got that really, really low ceiling on it, so it's either that we, I think we may explore to maybe drop that down a little bit and get more headroom, which will be the Ambulance Authority space, 'cause that way now the, the Fire Board wanted the, the recovered resource area, and it suits them better, and then you can turn back around and that space can get done, and then they can move into it rather than move it twice, and then the Ambulance Authority would be on the fire side, which will have the expansion towards the water tower, and a lot of glass added, so, 'cause that's always been, I think, the dungeon, so we wanna make sure that every, that area's taken care of, and, and the H V A. C. will be definitely relocated there. We roll right over to the, to the Health Department and on their addition, and that's going well, working out just a small area, a little bit more storage space, and they got some pre-construction number for that, which is about where we thought it would be, so, and then the Health Department transferred their money over, agreed to transfer it over, so between them and the state will pay probably for half the construction, and we would be the one on the hook for the other half, which is what we've done the last time, so.
We'll be coming in next week to ask you to approve the order to establish the special revenue fund.
Right.
For those additions, we do have a seven-hundred-fifty thousand dollar check in hand from the, from the Health Board today, Monday night.
Right.
And then we have the community dwell on block grant from the state, and, and then once we have some more definitive numbers, then I'll come to the council and ask you to move money over from our building fund into the special revenue fund, and then we'll maybe move it forward on that part tech, and as far as this building goes, our next meeting with Crabtree, they'll be bringing in their electrical engineers, their plumbers, their I T. people to, to begin developing the plans for the, the renovation of this building.
What about the extension service?
Extension service, we'll be working on, I have Winchester Environmental coming in to do the testing of one twenty-six West King Street, so that R F P. will be going out shortly, also we'll be doing an R F P. shortly for a new roof for seven-fifty Baltimore Street, and then we'll be doing the design for the, for the extension services, and I talked to Mike a little bit about that yesterday.
All right, so that, that's the main thing. All right, um, so that, that's the main thing I had talked about. Um, we'll be checking, and actually, Mr. Wam will be involved in the HVAC and stuff on the, on the, um, Health Department as much as possible, trying to make sure it's as efficient as po, as it can be. Anything else? Any activity on board and commission appointees?
Alan, you were telling me that I had, um, I had two vacancies, but my read ahead says one.
You have two. We do have two.
Huh?
We have two.
Tracy screwed up the read ahead.
Huh? On, on the CVB?
Yes.
I have two on already, right? I have one on. Who's the one that's on? Who's the one member that's on?
On.
Well, we appointed Patrick Darlington.
He came off.
Why would he come off?
Because that appointment was, apparently that appointment was due to his affiliation with development authority.
We didn't, we didn't identify it that way.
We received a notification he was off.
Who gave you a notification? Huh? No, Mark is absolutely wrong. I had that conversation with him yesterday. I mean, we, we appointed Patrick Darlington.
Has he been attending the meetings?
Uh, he, he didn't yesterday. I mean, he, he, he did the previous one, but he didn't, he didn't yesterday, and the reason he didn't yesterday was because his well quit working at his house, and he had to pull a six-hundred-and-forty-foot well to fix it, so.
Don't bank itself then, huh?
Huh?
Don't bank itself.
No, he was trying to find some help.
We had received a notification from the CBP that he was not on the council board.
Well, I didn't know the CBP was the one that made that decision.
Well, they're the ones that...
Huh? I can't hear what you said.
That he's not affiliated with the Development Authority anymore, it's in the bad law.
Well, we appointed him, he was, we didn't identify him as the Development Authority appointee, we appointed him as a member.
We'll, we'll look at it.
Probably.
We were working under the assumption that the CBP was the one that he was a member. Okay, we'll look at it.
All right, any other activity on boards and commissions? All right. Next on our agenda is a, uh, board and commission interview with, uh, Charles Chip Pencil III. And he is, uh, has filled out the paperwork to be a mem, uh, asked us for, to be a member of the, uh, Berkeley County Parks and Rec Board. Good morning, Mr. pencil, how you doing?
Good everyone.
So, yeah.
And everybody looking at you guys.
Yeah. I'm sure, I'm sure you're very comfortable with that.
Ah, yeah. I got big shoes still.
Yeah, yeah, you, yep, and couldn't, uh, it's, uh, understand that.
It's bittersweet.
It is. So, uh, all right, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Yeah, another job. One more.
You know, the old saying is, you want something done, you get somebody that don't have time.
That's right.
Right? Uh, tell us a little bit about yourself, Chip, that we may not know, and why you wanna serve on the Parks and Rec.
I'm not sure there's anything you don't know, but, um, lifelong resident, wife, works for, uh, county school board, daughter in high school, daughter in college, um, I've been chair of the, uh, hospital foundation, the, like a Charlestown Board, I'm on the FM Board, I'm gonna study. I look forward to, you know, trying to help the current leadership continue on.
Okay, all right. Do you have any visions of, of?
Obviously, we all have visions of huge growth. I, you know, to me, healthcare, education, Parks and Rec, the three main things the community needs. So, help grow the Parks and Rec is what I'm gonna do.
Okay, all right, well, we'll just start asking some questions and stuff, Mr. Barhart.
Well, I'm gonna answer you, what you would do different with the Parks and Rec, but...
Well, I've never been on the Parks and Rec, so I don't, really don't know what to do different.
Well, what would you like to do?
I mean, obviously, I think growing the current Courthouse Farms is a big, you know, I, I went to the, the, uh, one meeting a couple months ago out there, and I think growing the Courthouse Farms is a big, big...
What would you mean growing the Courthouse?
The playground dedication?
Excuse me?
The playground dedication?
No, the, uh...
Stakeholders' meeting.
The stakeholders' meeting. Because I think growing, you know, Parks and Rec as, you know, as a, you know, the Courthouse Farm, as a, you know, biking trails, hiking trails, I love to see turf fields, um, you know, there's a lot of things I wanna see.
Any other, I mean, the Allensville place has never been developed.
Uh, you know, I, I think that's, you know, a lot of things are tough, we can spread our money out all across the county, but I think we gotta sort of, you know, we, we, you know, how much money can you spend at Allensville? If, if we had unlimited money, we'd do them all. But I think you gotta concentrate on what you have now and grow.
Yeah, because we're trying to develop parkland.
Right.
You know, and in cooperation with Parks and Rec, and really, we need more ground available for Parks and Rec to diversify and add on to, whether it be an environmental thing, you protect ground, you know, enhance ground, or whatever.
I, I don't know that Parks and Rec is there to protect ground or enhance ground, I think it's there to create activities for our community.
But when you talk about trails, you know, that, that's an environmental thing, you know, to make sure it's scenic and recreational and all that kind of stuff.
Well, I think what trails do, it, it's not just for the use, it's for us, you know, it's for the whole community.
For people seventy-two and over, right?
Right, absolutely.
Yeah, a lot of handbags.
You know, we, we have enough basketball courts, you know, we, you know, I think...
Pickleball, I think.
Yeah, pickleball'd be great, but I think we gotta, you know, hit the whole community.
Any other questions, Jimbo?
He's got me on that.
All right, Mr. Delie.
Um, so, uh, I don't know, about a year ago, I did a, uh, I did a, um, town hall meeting in every magisterial district, and one of the conversations was the Parks and Rec. Um, we had, uh, three or four topics of conversation that we discussed with everybody. Um, you know, the thing that we heard, um, although Park, Courthouse Farm is, is probably, um, is probably the, the highest-used, um, park in Berkeley County, uh, everybody wanted, uh, was concerned about their community and Parks and Recs in their communities. Um, since then, we've, uh, we, we, the council has purchased ground in South Berkeley, um, to do a park. Uh, we've, we've started working on a park at Courthouse, or at, um, Sportsman's Paradise. Uh, we've even had conversations about trying to get access to the CNO Canal. Um, what, what are your thoughts on Dozy?
Well, obviously, to get rid of the Sportsman's Paradise would be an asset for the county. Um, have water access, water feature, is obviously a, a great asset. Um, I, you know, I don't know the timeframe on that, you know, I, you know, that, that's a big project.
Nothing much fast in government, Chip.
I know, so I may not be here to see it, but obviously it should be moved forward.
Right.
Uh, South Berkeley, I really don't know a whole lot about that, I did see the paper, so that's, you know, obviously we have the Randy Smith Center down there, North Berkeley's sort of struggling, probably with little parks, you know, Courthouse is centrally located, they sort of, south and north can hit it, so.
Well, north end right now is, it's even, I mean, not...
We have the soccer field.
Right, you have the soccer field, and then, then, uh, there is a ten-acre park that, for trails and, and stuff being designed right now, so a little bit helps.
Right.
Mr. Whitaker.
Chip, there's nothing I can ask you.
Thanks.
Well, I was gonna thank you, but go ahead, just pass on.
But, uh, yeah, Chip and I have known each other for quite a long time, been lifelong family friend, so thank you for wanting to give back to your community even more, so...
Right, I'll refer back to you, Mr. Delie.
Oh, I was just gonna thank you for, for stepping up and, you know, wanting to get involved and spending some of that spare time that you, you know, just sitting on the couch and...
When you call, I won't be able to answer, 'cause I'll be off to the Parks and Rec.
All right, Mr. Gokenaire.
Yes, good morning.
Morning, thank you, Eddie, for having me.
Number one, uh, thanks for applying, and I was excited when I found out that you were interested, because I, I think you could bring a whole lot to the table. I've known you and your family for a very long period of time. Uh, I wasn't aware that you were involved with so many different boards, uh, but obviously that brings a lot of experience and knowledge to the table, uh, which will help us. I think that, right now, that this board gets very strong, uh, you know, has some major changes, you know, in leadership, and, uh, I, I think you'd be a, a real good fit there, so, um, thanks for applying, and hopefully we'll be in touch soon.
Thank you, Eddie.
Thank you for helping me pump the Bay trees basement out in about twenty years.
Chip, I've known you a little bit over the years, and, and one thing I found out about you very quickly was you, you handle, handle yourself very professionally, you're a very professional-minded person, and, and your resume emphasizes exactly what I would say. Um, one of the things that I think when we, when we interview people in front, uh, of the council for a board, um, and you touched, touched on it, is, you know, I don't really know how or which direction I would go with the Parks and Rec, because I need to get involved, right? I need to be there, but what, what, what you do have to offer is a great business, is a, a, a great way to, to represent not only the Parks and Rec, but the Berkeley County Council as well, at a very professional level, and I appreciate that, your, 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 your three references that you have on, are, I mean, speaks for itself, you know, and the one on top, that Palmer boy, I don't know about him, but, but, no, I always torment Chris every time I, I get a chance to do that, and, and, uh, two of those, Chris serves on the board now, and, and Scott served on the board for many, many years, twenty-some years, I believe, so, i- if they think that you'd be a good fit, that, that's, that's great, and I, and I appreciate their thoughts and, and respect their thoughts, so, uh, thank you for applying, um, uh, we'll, uh, add to Eddie's board.
So they didn't say anything bad about me?
They didn't, nah, nah, and I, I drilled them too. And Henry as well, Henry's a great business mind, uh, so, uh, thank you for applying, and, and, uh, and, uh, we'll, uh, see, uh, we never make a decision a day in their view, but I'm, I, I know that position is, is, like you said, it's, uh, it's sad that the position is open, uh, couldn't think of a better person to fill that position than you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Right, this time I'm gonna ask Mr. Vice President Whitaker to take over a meeting for a couple minutes, and I'll show a step out, and I'll be right back.
All right, um, we'll be back to the beginning of my agenda here. Katie Spriggs, Eastern Panhandle Empowerment Center for budget presentation. We're right on time, how about that? That is good.
Never needed a microphone in my life, but we're gonna pretend today is the day. Um, Katie Spriggs, I'm the executive director of Eastern Panhandle Empowerment Center. Um, I'll start by just giving a little bit about what we do, in case there might be someone who's not sure, formerly Shenandoah Women's Center, so if you know that name, it's the same program, we just changed our name. Um, we serve victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, human trafficking, and dating violence. The full Eastern Panhandle, we serve Berkeley, Morgan, and Jefferson. We do have three, um, physical office locations, one in Morgan, one in Jefferson, one in Berkeley, and then we have a shelter, which is here in Berkeley. Uh, we serve, and, oh, so formerly Shenandoah Women's Center, uh, we were, uh, formed in nineteen-seventy-seven, have been serving for now almost fifty years. We did change the name in two thousand and eighteen for a couple of reasons. The, the biggest being, we were tired of being confused with the gynecologist, just every single day that happens, yeah, it still happens, you'd be surprised four years later, um, but a lot less now. Um, and two, uh, we wanted to really encompass all of what we do, um, now as we've continued to grow over the years, um, and that, usually, when we have budget conversations, right, in a nonprofit that's been established for almost fifty years, we're almost always talking about growth, right? Like, where can we continue to go, where we've already been, but we are kind of in a crisis, and we're talking about sustaining at this point. So, we're funded through kind of multiple entities, um, some federal grants, some state grants, we do get, um, some DHHR money through the state legislative budget, um, but the big pot of money we're gonna talk about today is VOCA, the Victims of Crime Act. It's a federal piece of legislation that's funded through fines and fees paid to the federal government through, most of the time, white-collar crimes, big corporations, um, all of that money gets funneled into that account, and then it gets paid out to victims of crime. Many, many people receive this funding above and beyond just domestic violence, sexual assault, human trafficking providers. For instance, you have applied for that grant for the prosecutor's office, um, we, uh, Jefferson County Prosecutor's Office gets it, um, CASA, um, Safe Haven Child Advocacy Centers, prosecuting a state attorney institute statewide, so a lot of us operate under this multimillion-dollar budget that comes down. Um, what happened at a federal level a couple of years ago, it was like twenty-fourteen, was they realized that money was going in faster than it was coming out, so they had a surplus. So, they rerouted where, how some of the money goes in the pot. So they're like, okay, we obviously don't need it in there right now, let's reroute it to where we do need money, but then they never routed it back. So you're imagining what's happening, right? It depleted, even though there was so much of it, slowly over time, that amount depleted. We fixed it at a federal level in twenty-twenty-one, so the money is going back in. But what happened, you're probably already figuring this out with your budget minds, is that's gonna reduce everyone's budget until we can build back up the amount in the big pot, if that makes sense. So what we looked at this year, the VOCA budget for us runs October to September every year, um, this year, this October twenty-twenty-one to September twenty-twenty-two, we took a forty percent cut. And we got lucky, at literally lucky, it feels like, that there was money left over at a legislative level in a state, and they did a budget supplement to all of us, to the state, to fill in that gap for all programs, so we maintained this year. But next year, we're looking at what we're guessing is a sixty-six percent cut, and I say guess, and I know we don't usually use that in financial areas, but we're guessing because it's kind of unpredictable, you don't know what white-collar crime is gonna be committed that causes money to go into the pot, right? So you can guess what you get on an average year, but there might be a good year and there might be a bad year. This year, it seems to be on target to be an average year. So we're looking at about a sixty to sixty-six percent cut. If you're wondering what that would do to us, we did, I don't know if you guys have had, if you haven't already, but I'd be happy to brought copies, give you kind of like a two-pager, that's what we do and how this money would affect us, um, if you want, can I bring you? So there, it's, each of you would take two, 'cause it's written back, three total pages. So that'll kind of give you an idea of what the money would look like, that cut would look like. Our VOCA budget, the amount we get just from them, is our largest grant, it's about six-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand dollars, so if we took a sixty-six percent cut, you can do the math, right, we're looking at like a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar cut. So how does that actually trickle down at Epic? Now, how it will affect everyone else statewide is individual based on program, but how that would affect us, I made you a little graph. So this is our organizational chart, right? This is me at the top, and then everybody else who works for us. These over here are numbered positions, so this one through ten is ten people, um, that work at the shelter, there's, I just can't fit it on this page. So this is our chart, everybody circled would be losing their job if we took the VOCA cut. And these people up here are the ones I want you to pay the most attention to, these are our therapists, these are our counseling staff. So pretty much the entire mental health approach that we have at Epic would go away, because we have to keep the crisis advocacy, right? We have to keep the people who go to the hospital at three o'clock in the morning and help a survivor find placement. We have to keep the one that drives the human trafficking victim to the airport at four AM, um, to reunite with her family, like, we have to keep those, the boots on the ground, and, most importantly, we have to keep the shelter open. So that's like our, they have to happen. So what we would sacrifice is the loss of our mental health services and the loss of our advocates that focus specifically on children. And that might seem extreme, because you're like, well, wouldn't you keep them? Sure, but we can't access the kids without the adults, so we have to still have adult services, right? And then we can try our best with the kids. But none of these are programs that we wanna cut. This funding also pays for our rent in our outreach offices. Chip is our landlord, it's interesting seeing him here in Small World, a very good landlord, might I add, but, um, he is our landlord in Jefferson County, we rent space off of the senior center in Morgan County. This could potentially eliminate both of those outreach offices. It's cutting what we do by sixty-six percent, essentially. Um, our organizational budget, so our whole budget is around one-point-two million, so VOCA makes up about half of it. So that gives you an idea of what we're cutting, and you're like, oh, well, you probably shouldn't rely on one grant for that much funding, right? Uh, we don't, we have many, many other grants, that one's just a really big one, right? It's the one that we're allowed to ask for that much money from, many other ones have a cap, and you can only ask for a hundred-and-fifty thousand, you can only ask for two-hundred-thousand. This is the one that's just able to be that big, so that's why it's gotten that big, and that's why we rely on it for so much. that's why we rely on it for so much. So really, we're coming to you just asking to sustain. Now, we have done other work on this, right? We're not just coming to you and being like, stop it all. We have already received 75,000 to help with this from the city. We are in contact with Ranson, and we're also looking at the, at Morgan County and Jefferson County, because we serve those areas too. So we're trying to make it up in multiple places, we also have a legislative ask this year. We're also going to ask for that supplement again. But we know they probably cannot supplement, because on a state level, they're looking at like 12 million dollars for everybody who receives it statewide. So we know they might not be able to supplement that much, so we're trying to kind of pick it up. This, this, this organization was built by a community, and it might have been sustained by the community and grants, and federal and state grants for so long, but this is the time we have to look back at our community and just hope to keep it moving forward as it is now. And we've actually been in the process of trying to either build or buy a bigger facility for the shelter, because we do have a sixteen-bed shelter, and we have forty-seven people on the waitlist when I left the office to come here. So it's clearly too small, it's been too small for years. So we have had to put that on pause, because how on earth do you run a capital campaign and say, I want to raise five million dollars, while you have to lay off staff to sustain? Like, we obviously have to pause that in order to just keep going. So at this point, we're not even trying to build, we're just trying to keep going. I'd be happy if anybody has any questions or you need clarification.
I'm okay. Jim? Dan?
Your, your mental health services that you have available to folks, are they only available to folks that you bring into the shelter? So if somebody is struggling, they could come for those services and still get the help, that they'd be a request?
Yeah, so in the shelter each year, we probably serve 300 survivors and children, because the shelter does have children in it, but overall, we serve about 1,600, thirteen to 1,600, depending on the year. So all the rest of those, like 1,000 to 1,300, never come into the shelter. They just receive what we call outreach services, which is out of the shelter, essentially. So these are often, it's, it's kind of, varies in the degree of emergence. So you might have someone who comes in and is like, I fled this morning, I have literally nothing, help me. Or you have someone who says, I can't sleep because I'm having reoccurring dreams from my childhood trauma, can you help me? And we can help both, and the mental health services are available to both, no matter the level of urgency. We do have three clinical social workers, that is our therapeutic staff right now.
All right, well, thank you so much, Katie.
Thank you so much, and if you have any questions.
Thank you for the wonderful work you're doing for our community.
Of course, thank you. Feel free to contact us, thanks.
Hey, Alan?
Yes, sir.
I want to get the same papers we got, but go, put them on his side over here.
Okay.
Just, I didn't think about it, it passed me. There you go. Thank you. All right, next on the list is, well, we got two back, is Elaine and, and one of her board members, Charlie, and Nick just stepped out, so. Charlie, it's good to see you in person this time.
Thanks, nice to see all of you. Better move up if I want to hear what's going on. Too many helicopters per hour is over my early years. It's bad for joy right here.
I was going to say, a little bit of turbine air?
But I have fun doing it.
I guarantee you.
Good morning, I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and, yeah, as Jim alluded to, we were kind of shocked by Amanda's resignation.
Emotional shock.
It was, yes, it's very emotional. I, I usually, I'm, I'm a weeper, and I didn't cry until I told the board on Monday, so. But, you know, Amanda has done a tremendous job for us, it's going to be a huge loss. She is going to Northern Virginia Transit Authority, which covers four counties of public transit, and they're doubling your salary, I mean.
That's sort of a no-brainer.
It, it's a no-brainer. She came in as a blank slate, I've taught her public transit, and she's going to take that knowledge and go. I, I'm very proud of her. Sorry for our loss, yeah, it's a big loss.
That's one of the problems we have in our community is that a lot of times, you know, you have that where people use this as a, a training to get to a level to where they can go a very short distance and make much more than we can afford to pay here in our community of West Virginia.
So we are advertising that, so.
Oh, no, I was just going to say, that, that also goes to show you what kind of training we give. You know, that, that gave her the ability to apply for that job and to get it.
Yes.
You know, so kudos to you too.
If I say she applied for a position there and did not get it, but they created a position for her there, so.
Well, kudos to you for giving her the.
Well, thank you. But we are, we are looking for a new deputy director, so anybody who wants to get into the public transit world and stay, one of the, I'm going to, before we do our presentation, I mean, the board has been very adamant about a succession plan for our agency, and that was part of our succession plan. I feel like I do have an end date. I won't be around forever, I'm a little bit older than, you know, Amanda was, so we are looking for that next young person to come in and, and want to love public transit as much as I do and as much as the board does, and, and learn and come and take over and be productive in this county. But, I gave you a packet, you don't need to look at it while we're talking, I just want you to go back and be able to review it, but I am going to highlight a couple really big things. On Monday, the board did approve our architectural firm for design and engineering on the transit center project, so Michael Baker has been awarded that. So that is going to be moving very quickly now, which I'm very proud of, and hopefully that will, that's going to benefit this county greatly, so we're, we're proud of it.
Heard you on the radio yesterday, because you preceded my wife.
Oh, well, thanks for listening, Jim.
Yeah, I was required.
That's part of your job security, though.
Yeah, right. Life security, we're talking about.
Yeah, life security.
A little bigger than that.
Yeah, so one of the other big things we're looking at with the NPO is our commuter bus program, which will be a pilot program hooking up to the new Ashford Station in Eastburg, the Silver Line. The state is, we're hoping to get confirmation of CNEC funding to provide the funding for the first three years of it, the state is providing money for a commuter bus, so we're hoping to get a commitment for two buses out of the state.
How big?
Thirty-eight passenger, so. And they will be commuter bus style, they won't be the typical transit bus.
Does that meet the need, or do you know what the need is, or?
Well, so we're working with Michael Baker and Foursquare on that. I, I think the demand could be greater than the seeds we have available, but they do have a contingency plan to grow that in the future, so. It's a pilot program, we'll see how it goes, we're excited about it, there's a lot of opportunities.
What do those buses cost, you know?
Um, so, depending if we get a medium-duty bus, we're going to put about 100,000 miles a year on, and that becomes a seven-year 200, 200,000-mile bus. If we go for a heavy-duty bus, they're about 500,000 miles, but the discrepancy in cost is about 250 versus 500,000. So right now.